I'd love to have you here because I tell you, you're a man with a lot of good questions for us.
I want to hear the data.
Very good. All right, we're going to start this meeting. We're going to start the workshop meeting of November 9th. It is 12:35, so we're starting now. The first item that we wanted to talk about was the historic district overlay. Ms. Jean Minner, come on down.
Give you some background information.
I think that'd be good because I think, let's just go to the background information first. I think that'd be great for us to know exactly what the historic district is.
Okay, so the color map at your place is the current historic district as shown in our comprehensive plan. And it's also a zoning map. That's a blue map. So this is the existing historic district, and it includes, again, the traditional downtown areas, the middle school, Holly Falls, and Atlantic. When the Historic District Commission designated this zone, Mike Jason was on that board, and we walked around and looked at it. And I believe we also took into account a survey that was done by Maryland Historic Trust. It was initiated by the State Highway Administration in 2004, and they wanted preliminary determinations of national register eligibility so that when they plan road through their projects, they're not going to run into problems with historic structures. So Maryland Historic Trust staff did this older map that was dated 2004, the black and white map, which shows areas of historic, national register eligible areas, neighborhoods, and districts. So this is actually, this covers a larger area than our current historic district does. Unfortunately, and when they did this, when they did that survey, it was a survey done by staff at NHE that need federal qualifications to do that. It was paid within federal PEA 21 I C grant. When they did that, they looked at properties in those neighborhoods, and they did a determination on a property-by-property basis as to whether they thought they were contributing or non-contributing structures in historic districts. The problem is, there's some blanks in here, and I don't know whether these structures are considered contributing or non-contributing. That's the first problem. The second problem, this is a horrible map. And they don't have anything better than this. You know, and what I would like is a more detailed, up-to-date map for this. So that might be something we might want to consider. I think it prompted the discussion.
Why did we start the historic district?
Okay, so the historic district at the state level, it's a public purpose at the state to preserve sites, structures, and districts of historical, archaeological, or architectural significance. So this is a standard of the state. They want to see historic areas preserved. They don't consider the Maryland Land Use Article. So then they go on to authorize us as a jurisdiction to set those boundaries. And they go into detail to what the regulations should say. So with our current comprehensive plan, 2010 comprehensive plan, we discuss the historic district and the importance of it, and how the purpose of the regulations are to safeguard the heritage of the town by preserving areas and structures which reflect elements of its cultural, social, economic, political, or architectural history or prehistory. Because this town has a very interesting, very unique history. You know, it was located between major transportation corridors at the head of Chesapeake Bay, which helped us grow and achieve significance. And we show that in some of the built environment. So it's stated in our comprehensive plan that preserving the town's historic and cultural heritage can help promote Elk Town as a sustainable community by demonstrating the connection between the town and the preservation. By focusing on issues like adaptive reuse of buildings, the town can embrace its history and create new uses for older structures. So in the comprehensive plan, we have goals and objectives, and there's three listed here. To protect the history inherited of Elk Town by preserving resources, sites, and structures of social, economic, political, architectural, and historic significance. Emphasize the town's historic resources to promote a sense of community pride among residents, and support the revitalization of neighborhoods through renovation and adaptive reuse of older structures. And then we, in order to implement the comprehensive plan, we have the zoning ordinance, which has, we have a chapter four that. And so it states even there, the commissioners often believe that the public interest and convenience require the preservation and protection of certain places, sites, structures, districts, and areas of historic interest. Exterior architectural features and examples of the types of architecture gardens and grounds found in older areas of Elk Town. So, you know, the purpose is to enhance the quality of life, save our historic and cultural heritage by preserving site structures and districts that reflect argument of the elements of these things. To strengthen the local economy, stabilize and improve property values, foster civic beauty, to promote the preservation and appreciation of the sites, for the education and welfare of the residents of Elk Town.
I think, of course, I know that, I guess here's a couple of questions I have with it. There's no question, I feel, that historic value of our town is something that we're very proud of. I know that we were looking at doing the study, or we did a study.
It's getting ready for, have the hearing, but we had a change of folks in the Historic District Commission.
Yes.
So we had to have them, you know, being underneath them before we could have the consultants come and talk to them about the draft of the district guidelines that we established.
Very good.
That we drafted, not established yet.
The challenge that I have with the historic overlay is that I almost believe it's too broad, even though we're looking at, we've shrunk it down from this map to this map. I'd like to see it be specific buildings. And I don't know if we can or we can't, but my vision is, is, I think we should be able to determine that this building is under that, this building is under that, this building has no significance whatsoever, but yet they fall in the heart of this area, and they have to follow the same guidelines. And maybe we wouldn't have to change them if we could make this flow a little bit better in some way. I've seen with the action that we've had in our downtown, that, I'll give you an example with, well, that might not be a good example, but let's say a sign, for example. Building A wants to rent this building and put a sign on it. We have to go through the historical committee, or the overlay committee, to get the approval. And it just seems like to me, I don't quite understand why that's in their wheelhouse.
Because they have the authority to review development, reconstruction, and alterations in the historic district overlay zone.
Can, let me add one up. Can this committee be done by the planning commission? Could this be another task we give to the, and I don't want to say, well, I am going to say, can we eliminate the historic overlay committee that we have and give the responsibilities to the planning commission?
Well, the Historic Overlay Committee has requirements for education and background to make them qualified, say, and it deals with knowledge or interest in historic preservation and architecture.
Okay, that's right.
I would probably recommend what might be helpful, perhaps, is if, you know, there has already been some preliminary work on identifying contributing and non-contributing structures in the historic district. And maybe we could update this and have a little more detail associated with it. But if you wanted to look at it based on contributing and non-contributing structures, you might be able to narrow down the neighborhoods and areas based on the predominance of contributing and non-contributing structures.
Because I would say, I know at one time, on this old map, I was in the historic overlay, and I'll use an example. Now, Charlie, your house is in the historic overlay. So if you wanted to replace your windows in your home, you'd have to come to the historic overlay committee.
Right.
And that's why I have written down there, if you live in a district, are you compelled to do this or not do this?
Well, if you're going to make alterations to the exterior of your structure, it only deals with the exterior of the structure visible from the street. So if you're going to make changes to the building, then you need to come before the board, explain what you're going to do. And look at the determination. Based on subjective, it's pretty subjective as to whether or not, you know, the changes are fine, they're not going to have any precarious effect on the structure or the.
Public appearance.
Yeah, a little bit. More, you know, more, so, you know, is it going to degrade the building? Is it going to take away something that was valuable, what we're seeing as valuable cultural components of the building?
Let's use another small example. I think everyone received the email about the permits to drive, and there's some lanterns on there. Then there was question, San Am, should they have come to the historical district to get approval? Am I correct, San Am?
Yeah, I think they should have. And they permanently fixed a lantern on a public piece of public property.
I don't know who did it.
We don't know who did it.
I talked to a neighbor there, Norther, Norther, but he didn't know. He didn't know what. I suspected somebody nearby.
I mean, also because then it opens it up to anybody that's had a public infrastructure.
My problem with this is, I don't want to destroy any of the historic properties. And I say historic properties, meaning can we identify the historic properties within this district? Because like you're saying, Charlie's house, or a property even on Main Street that has been totally redone in the 1960s or 70s, that has no historic value to the front of it anymore.
Right.
But yet they're still having that extra layer coming here to go through this committee. Like when you look at the Elk Town, when they did their facade, that was a metal 1950s facade on there. It wasn't a historic facade. So.
Newberries?
Newberries, yes.
Better records.
But.
They could go down to the K and M Models. That's old. Those turtles.
What's the advantages of having the historic overlay besides preserving the district? What's the advantage?
Well, that's the purpose, is for them to implement the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance where the importance of preserving these structures and neighborhoods are stated.
Does us having this in our ordinance provide us with any benefits other than?
I think it would help us.
Any kind of funding, special funding?
They do ask about that. You're required to, even with facade grants, the Maryland Historic Trust is going to review it.
They're going to review it, okay. So it's important that we have it.
As a matter of fact, the Main Street program, the historic, one of the approaches in the Maryland Main Street program, they're designing enhancing the physical appearance of the commercial district by rehabilitating historic buildings. In order for us to be a Maryland Main Street, the eligibility criteria includes must have a defined central business district with a significant number of historic commercial buildings. So it is important. It's important to the state, so.
So, but now we just need to tweak it.
We need to completely refine it down, and then maybe we can, maybe the neighborhood won't be quite so broad, or maybe go in and out a little bit.
Can you make those suggestions to us and bring it back to us?
I am not a market historic architect. What we could recommend is we could hire someone who's certified by Maryland Historic Trust and be qualified to do this. And if you take a look at it and do a better job than they did on this one State Highway that paid for.
Then I would say, maybe get a price from them, what they would be.
Does it, would it cost Charlie money to come before?
Yes, it's $50.
So, right there, you could make that move.
I mean, Washington.
It costs money because we have to advertise it in the neighborhood. It's a public.
For his windows.
It's a public. Now, if you're repairing and or replacing with the same exact materials, you don't need to come before the board. It's considered managed. There's a lot of exceptions in the ordinance. And then plant, the Historic District Commission, when you're reviewing something like that, if the property does not have any sort of significant historic, you know, features that they want to preserve, they approve it. It's subjective, so they'll weigh.
Can we ask KCI if they have someone available to, I mean, would it be this? Could this be something KCI could handle?
If they're qualified under the criteria that Maryland Historic Trust.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe take a look at that first. Well, get that in.
Instead of paying for it, KCI, we have somebody on the board, and, 50,000.
He's on Nancy White.
Okay.
One of the things that's currently being decided on this meeting is the building that I have, 202 East Main, second one where it says it stops on, this building, 1900. Sometime, I think in 80s or 89s, the front door was changed, all the windows were changed, and now.
This was in.
Before it was in place. And now, frankly, that front door's over. But, you know, and so I think that a lot of that has happened through the historic district. Now we've got kind of a podge-podge of stuff.
Sure, there's been changes over the years because the Historic District Commission was only seated, I think, in 2007, was it?
Whenever.
The regulations have been on the books for a while, but the board has been seated for maybe seven or eight years. So there's a lot of things that have happened. And when they look at what you're changing, what you're doing, they don't make you go back and make Disneyland. They don't make you go back and fake it. But they do want it to sort of respect the architecture of the buildings. So they're not going to make you go back and put in a, what, 1800 window with pergola windows and stuff like that.
Well, we'll get that information.
Okay, so I'll look for consultants and get you some prices.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Okay, Chip, are you up for the town center zone, or Jean, both of yous, or how is that?
This is just, this is a draft of a proposal to see if the board would be interested if this was satisfied. In fact, your business owner's requesting to be able to put a larger sign in the TC district.
And what this is in reference to is right now in our, in our ordinance is, a business owner can put a bigger sign, but then they have to go to the Board of Appeals. Is that correct?
Yes.
They would have to go get a variance. And then to get that variance, it costs them how much?
$358.
$358 to apply to get a little bit larger sign. And 99.9% of the time, the variance goes through, and they allow the sign. Kind of my feeling is, every time that we have a change of business down there, they have to come in and get a new sign. Why can't we just enlarge the sign? Is that, I think that's.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm offering. This is for a projecting sign. This is five square feet when you count both sides. That's currently all you're allowed. What I'm proposing is twelve and a half square feet counting both sides. Not necessarily when you square, but that gives you an idea. Because these are signs that you need to see while you're driving down the road, not just walking. You know, this is still smaller than a lot of existing signs down here. So that's.
I think this is a huge step.
That's a great, great.
We have to go to the planning commission, but then I wanted to see if you thought this was enough, if this would help.
What do you think?
They're exactly fine sticking out of the building.
Yes.
You're walking.
I don't, you would want any.
25 miles an hour.
I mean, that gives you plenty.
To see and drive by, and, yeah.
It's a big difference.
A little flexibility with making them a little fancier.
Yeah.
No, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any charge.
Is that what's in here? Would there be no charge?
On that size.
Long as there is placement, not a new sign.
No, this could be for a new one.
A new one.
Or.
Now a new.
Yeah. And so, you know, there's not too many projecting signs down there as it is. But this way, you know, we have somebody who wants one. When they're limited to that little one, you can't, you can't see it when you're driving.
No, if someone wanted that, the original size sign, and they want to put that on the building, there is zero charge to the, to the customer to put that sign up.
That's a full sign permit.
Other than the sign permit.
Yeah.
And this is for projecting.
That's what it was.
But if they wanted to put a sign of the other size, they'd have to go in front of the Board of Appeals and get a variance.
Right.
Which costs them an additional $358. $358. And we're going to approve it anyhow. I would say we're going to approve it.
Generally, they, they agree.
Yep. So this is good.
Yeah.
So everyone take a look at this, and, Chip, thank you.
Yeah, the other things, the banners.
Banners.
I haven't really drafted anything off of that yet. But basically, you got people who want to have more than one banner, which is all currently allowed. And it's allowed for 30 days, four times a year, which we can't police. So I basically want to have it. They can have it for a year, a year with permit. But I want to do something based on spacing, you know, depending if they have a larger street frontage. You know, you could have one every 40 or 50 feet as opposed, we have some people want one every 10 feet, and that's just ridiculous. It's going to look too gauged. And so I'm trying to come up with something that will work. And the sticking point is when you get to the strip malls, you know, if you let everybody in the strip mall put something out there, you're going to have a mess. We're going to have to kind of figure out how to keep them out of it to some degree. Because right now, Big Elk Mall, you have Kmart and Planet Fitness as far as people that are back in the strip that put banners out. We've limited them to two for now till we get something worked out, and it doesn't look too bad. Kmart had six or seven out there, and it was, you know, it didn't look good.
I think, I think it's a huge step. You know, marketing ideas change every X amount of years. And, you know, it was the Red Man, that little blow-up thing. Those little blow-up things were a hot little item to attract your eye, the balloons.
And the fly is the base thing to that.
Currently, it's the, it's the banners, the ones that, to the poles, the vertical poles.
Yeah, they look like feathers to me. I think that's how it.
And it's tough to adjust on the run, but we almost have to, because who knows what the next one's going to be.
Yeah. So, you know, I'll come up with something and then see if that's sound suitable or anybody, and we'll send it to the planning commission.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah, we're good. I'm business friendly.
There we go. That's what we're trying to do. All right, that's the way we roll around here in Elton. Okay, Meadow Park lighting evaluation. Come on down. Do you want me to give a little bit of what we, or are you going to start the recap of what we did? What we did was Commissioner Piner, for everyone to bring us all back to where we're at with this. Commissioner Piner spends a lot of time down there at Meadow Park, and the usage of the park is probably as great as it's ever been, especially this year. I mean, there's been a lot of usage down at the park. And about a year ago, Commissioner Piner suggested maybe we flip the lights and create some more lighting down there for the back fields. And we ran into a few hiccups when we did this. You know, my, of course, our thinking was, well, why don't we just put another row of lights on the back side of those poles without flipping the other ones? But then we found out that we have some electric, it's not the problem of putting lighting up, it was the problem of having enough power and getting that power through, we got some hiccups with the flood plain and other issues that we have down there. But we did an audit, something, we went to look to find out how our lighting audit was. LUSCO came out, and they had this little meter, and they would sit in the middle of the field, and they would be able to determine how much lighting was available for each, for the, in each one of these little squares. And I'm going to, I'm going to say, what was the number?
Eight.
Okay, we were, we were at eight or nine, which was the, which was probably okay 30 years ago when those lights might have been put up. It was, there was probably no set amount that this lighting chart had to be. But we were at eight or nine, and we're supposed to be at thirds. So the lighting down there for recreation purposes should be three times greater than what we have right now for, for recreation purposes in the park. And that's, that's for recreation. If you want it to go to even the standard of high school, is at 50. So if you go into Elton High School, their lighting is, into their field is at 50, and we're at eight. Now, it doesn't look like it's at thirds when we're down there. It really doesn't. I think we get used to it. But from a standard out there of play, now, the good news about that eight, he said, was we had a consistent eight through the field. There was no, there was no spots that if someone threw a football, it wouldn't be coming out of a shadow into the lighted area. It was a pretty good standard. Am I explaining this right? So what we have to decide as a board, if we want to budget next year for lighting, there's a quotation, we've got a couple quotations here, and, Mary, I'm going to let you take it from there, I think, as all I know.
We have two quotes. One's for lighting football-sized field, we can expand it, light soccer-sized field, we can light one field or two fields. And then I also have a quote to use the existing poles on the football field. So if we were to use the existing football field, it would save us money if we only did that field. But if we run away to second field as well, it's going to cost the same whether we use the existing poles or the field.
And my understanding, what he stated down there that day, is we currently have eight poles, and, and they said that with the modification, we'd be going down to six poles.
Six poles per two fields.
Six poles for two fields. And I think the challenging part that we have is whether we can even put poles into the, into the ground. You know, I don't know. That's something, we have to get some permission on that here.
Mary, do you think you can get some open space grant money?
There, we did borrow some playgrounds, and I did contact, I just haven't answered my question, but she said that it has provided grant money for lighting projects. I don't know how much. If we were to do two fields, the estimate would be $300,000, $300,000. So I don't know how much we could get, but we potentially could get a grant. That grant I would submit in August of next year, and I do not find out if that equals $10,000.
August 2017, you submit?
Submit it in our ordinance for April 2018.
2018.
That's a grant. There's a schedule with August, and then they announce it. And then somewhere between April and October, we actually get the final. But once you get that letter in, it will be about to start.
If the, if we decide to move forward with new lighting into the park, can we go and put, start the project ourselves and then apply for it? It won't work.
Now, Rob, you were talking about, how many, how many lights have been added?
There's eight poles.
All right, if you're going to go from eight to six, then of course it's going to be lighter. Would that be enough to compensate both if, whether you're playing football or soccer?
It's just the spacing.
I thought he was talking about turning the lights this way now, instead of like one, two down here, two in the middle, and two at the end, in order to make the six lights the whole field. Can you tell?
I don't know how he said it, but it.
I thought, you were saying six poles. I just, I thought he meant two on one side. The two in between the two fields would have lights on either side, and then two on the other side. He said I have six poles.
We could, we could actually, maybe you could ask him for a diagram of where they were thinking. The other thing that he had me concerned about, about using the same poles, was that if they start doing some testing, that galvanized material, as much as we flood it, flood it, they may not be, that's something we should probably take a look at anyhow, on a room, to see if there is any damage to those galvanized poles after as much water flooding that we've had down there at the park over the years.
We aren't, if it's LED lighting, we'll be saving on it. Did he give a cost estimate on savings, like for fall or anything?
No, but. And we really only use, those lights are really only used September through November.
So there's, there's nothing we have to do right now anyhow on this, except continue to digest this a little bit.
If we want to apply for grant money, we want to have a reasonable budget, then I think that's.
And so essentially, the lights are only used just for a three-month period time, basically? time, basically?
Just for a book, okay, cool. There's two football, there's two different, two different ways to use them, one right now providing their own, like a little trailer.
So can I just put on these poles that are there, because they are my lighter?
Like, one hole is much...
So, I don't know, the lamps?
Yeah.
You can't put light bulbs, you have to put...
Well, whatever that, I don't know, something like...
You know, you take the, it's ink and doesn't fix it now.
Right, and change it over to an LED.
You can, with, it's, it's, you can use the same poles, but it's still $130, $140.
Oh, that's the, okay.
Yeah, so if we're using the same, same poles to put the new lighting structure in, it's between $130,000, $145,000 for budgeting.
Just for the one field?
For the one field. And if we wanted to light both fields, we're looking at Field Two, yeah.
Say $300 a brand, $35,000.
Well, listen, thank you so much for getting this for us, and we'll just have to digest it. Thank you. Okay, Lou, you were on the Bell Hill Water Tower.
I periodically inform the board about the Bell Hill Water Tower project. As you, as you may be familiar with, when the tower was built in 19, I think, '86, it was built on a perpetual easement, it didn't own the land. And when I first became the administrator back in the beginning of the Dark Ages, the, the, we were approached by AT&amp;T, this is a good example, about renting space on our tower for antennas. Well, once they had their belly full of the Maryland Transportation Authority bailed out, so we lost a good shot at revenue. Since that time, Selco Partnership, trading as Verizon Wireless, they came to me about it, and I said, "We would be interested in leasing space to them, but I need to own the property first, because in the Maryland state, that can get part of that, it doesn't complicate the process." So anyway, to make a long story short, I approached the Maryland Transportation Authority to sell coffee to us to assemble, as a perpetual easement, because it wasn't an advantage to them, it wasn't used for expansion of I-95 or anything else, but granting perpetual easement with improvements on it, they couldn't use it anyway. But anyway, to make a long story short, they agreed to that, and then through a long and tedious process, they finally did a evaluation or appraisal of the property of $49,000. And this has since went to the Board of Public Works and has been approved for sale to the town of Elton. All I need now is, the deed's been sent to the governor and the treasurer, the comptroller that's who's on the Board of Public Works, for signature. Whether it's signed or not, I don't know, but once it gets signed, gets in its pack to the Maryland Transportation Department, once they have it, they'll call me and set up settlements for the, for the land, and then repay them, and they give us the land, and we report the deed, and on and on like that. At that time, I can initiate the agreement with Verizon, of course, bringing it to the board. The advantage of this, $49,000 sounds like a lot of money for half acre land, but where it is, that's, that's what we're settled with. But we currently lease to Verizon Wireless, same company actually, for the Blue Bowl Tower, we get $20,736 annually. So we'll make our money back pretty quick on that.
We, just with two leases, we're going to have to pay it off.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't know, we might be able to get more for it, how, where it's located, but we won't get less for it. So we'll make our money back pretty quickly, and then we'll perpetually, perpetually, we want it to be simple. So I would recommend that the board authorize this, the purchase of that, or the payment of $49,000 to the, to the state of Maryland.
Does anyone have any issue with that?
I'll bring it to decision-making, you know, I had a regular meeting, but I just want to make sure I consent before I walk in there. As soon as they give me a settlement, I, I bet you know anyway, but we'll pay for it, I made facility money, because we're going to have to use the facility money for acquisition proper. So that's, it will be paid at a general fund or tax money.
Fantastic.
So we're all, I guess, I'll bring it up to a regular meeting.
So you want to have anything from the board that you want to bring up?
At the planning commission meeting the other night, they talked how well the Wawa project has represented the town, how well it looks in the town, there was very few problems, and getting it directed, and they would like to see the town send a, a letter on behalf of someone, you know, thanking them for being here in the town of Elton. I thought that was a good idea, because, you know, we all were there, we thought they had a grant.
Yeah, it'd be good, sure. You draw one up, Lou, that'd be great. I can tell you, it was the finest grand opening I've ever been to in my life. I mean, they did a, they did a first-class job, their staff was wonderful, they just did it, did it well, they did it well. All right, anyone in the audience have any questions today of us? Yes, Ms. Jean?
I just wanted to make an announcement, I received an invitation, which is for everyone, that you're invited to join Union Hospital for an open house ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of the new Radiation Oncology Center on Monday, November 14th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The ribbon cutting's at 5:00 p.m. at 152 Railroad Avenue. And I can, I send this everybody to...
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'm glad you reminded us, on Friday, this Friday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m., the Elton VFW is hosting the Veterans Day celebration. I cannot be there, one of my dear friends passed away, and I'll be at his service. So anyone from the board that can attend, that'd be great, and...
What time is that?
11:00 a.m., 11, 11, 11. And Lou, if you could maybe create a proclamation that we can give to the VFW for Veterans Day, for hosting the event, that'd be great, and we'll all sign it, and whoever goes over can take it. Very good. Meeting adjourned. Jeremy, see, that wasn't that bad, right?
Well, I didn't expect it.